This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and posted on the municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the Planning Board Secretary. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anybody with a cellphone or other device to kindly put it on silent mode for the duration of this meeting. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Today is Monday, February 3rd, 2020. Councilwoman Avon Clayton.
Here.
Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Jim Henry. Michael Mandela.
Here.
Trudy Sifak. Jennifer Soder.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Barbara Kison.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, can I ask the fire official, do we have enough, are we at capacity, beyond capacity, below capacity, to continue with this meeting?
Below capacity.
Okay, so we're good to go.
Yes, sir.
All okay? All right. All right. Can I please get a motion to have public comment be three minutes and one time around to the microphone, please?
So moved.
Olive paper?
Aye.
Okay. So, thank you all for coming. There's just a couple of things I'd like to mention before we get started, just to, because it's a large crowd, and we're good with that. We just want to bring up a couple of things. We're talking about having a three-minute, by-the-clock, any comment that someone would like to make is welcome to make it. We'd like to make sure that we limit it to not reemphasizing the same exact statement that other people have made, because we hear it once, we got it. So if we can just keep it to, in respect to everybody being able to get up to the mic, please, let's not be too repetitive, let's give everybody an opportunity to speak. And I think that that's all that we have at this point. We also have, just for a matter of the record, we have Mr. Beekman today instead of Mr. Serpikoff. Oh, and a couple of other things. We do have our city's finest here, so we are asking that if there is any disruption or anything that might happen, we will ask you to please leave. It has happened in the past, we have not enforced that in the past. We are asking that we will today enforce that. So we like a respectable meeting, that we each respect each other, and have constructive comment. And we will listen. And I would also ask that we limit the amount of clapping, the amount of murmuring that goes on, because then we don't get an accurate transcript, because we can't hear what the people that are making the comments are saying if there's all this undercurrent of speech. So please, let's respect each other, and let's get going.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Will I be permitted to do a closing at the end?
This is it. Where comments are, or maybe I should say this, as to what the procedure will be after this. If anyone objects to that, we can have that discussion, okay? So what we envision that's going to happen tonight is that we're going to go with our three-minute comment session. We are hoping to be able to finish all the comments tonight. That is our hope. The next meeting, we are going to open for deliberation, meaning that we are not making any decisions tonight, we're not going to deliberate tonight, so we're clear. So what's going to happen after this, so the next, the following meeting, what will happen is that the planning board will discuss amongst themselves. Because this application is so large, and has gone on for so long, we would like to have that time where we can deliberate amongst ourselves, public is welcome, it's open to the public, the public has no time to question or comment at that time, but we will be making deliberations amongst ourselves before a decision is made of any kind.
Please, it will all come out in the end.
So what's going to happen now is that, I'm sorry, the next meeting, what will happen is that there'll be deliberations, and then if we're done with our deliberations that day, we will come up with a decision. So that is the goal. The other thing that might happen that day is that if, I'm asking the planning board, if there's any witness that they would like to hear again, we will let the attorneys know that we are interested in having those witnesses come back, because the planning board has questions for those specific people. So they may be asked to come back, and then the public has, obviously they can hear whatever questions we have to ask, of those witnesses, if there are any witnesses we want to bring back, they're able to do the same thing, ask questions like they did in the past, and provide comments as they have in the past. So the procedure starts again, so let's say, for example, if we ask for the, for some reason, we want the architect to come back up for the applicant, then we ask our questions, they reply to our questions, the public gets to question exactly what was discussed at that time, and at the end, they're allowed to comment again. So that is the procedure that we are looking to follow. So we may be done today with comments, it's all up to you. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
This is my question.
All right. Okay, name and address, please.
I want to make sure the microphone is...
Okay, make sure the microphone's on, because...
Can you hear me?
Sorry?
Should we state the application just for the record?
Okay, I'm sorry. The application is for Asbury Partners, 1500 Ocean Ave., Block 2502, Lot 1.23, WRA Zone, otherwise known as the Beach Club.
Motion to open public comment.
Second.
Can you hear me? I'm pretty tall.
Aye.
Can you hear me with this microphone? Okay. No, you can't hear me.
Go a little closer.
I can't lift it up.
If you could pull it up a little higher.
Thanks very much. You'll have to allow time for the next person to lower.
That's...
Okay, I'm Madeline Monaco, I live on Ocean Avenue in Asbury Park. I'd like to thank the planning board, the public, and all parties involved for the dialogue throughout these hearings. I respectfully ask our planning board to seriously consider all of our sound objections that have been raised.
Just a second, just a second.
I'm sorry, we have to swear, you want?
Oh, sorry.
You swear, I'm sorry. You swear. Yeah. We can't hear. Okay, ma'am.
It's the only microphone we have, I'm sorry.
We'll reset the time.
We'll reset it all. All right, nice and close.
Get close to it when you speak.
I have to get very close.
Yeah, get very close. And speak loudly.
Speak louder.
I will.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name again for the record and spell your last name.
Madeline Monaco, M-O-N-A-C-O, Ocean Avenue, Asbury Park.
And just once again, once again, please, on the sides, please, let's keep the murmur down, because we can't get an accurate transcript when we hear you speaking. Thank you.
Okay, can I start with the thank you again? I'd like to thank the planning board, the public, and all parties involved for the dialogue throughout these hearings. I respectfully ask our planning board to seriously consider all of the sound objections that have been raised. It is our responsibility to acknowledge that our waterfront is in a very different environment state than it was 18 years ago when the waterfront redevelopment plan was devised. We cannot hide under an outdated plan. Even Governor Murphy announced last week legislation that would require builders to account for climate change, especially along our precious and vital coastline. What scares me about iStar's pool club is that iStar has been repeatedly asked questions about structural engineering, flood management, and operations. We have received inadequate or vague answers, or the frequent response that's not required. I am concerned about inappropriate storm drainage on a parcel of land that is now in the highest velocity flood zone, about the safety of items on the rooftops such as chairs and umbrellas that can become airborne on our frequent, very windy days, about refusal to address parking issues, about noise pollution in a quiet residential area, and a whole host of other issues. The fortress-like structure planned for this pool club is ugly, it is intentionally intimidating. The wall-covering vines appear unsafe, the structure screams of exclusion. Memberships for this club will be expensive and unaffordable for the majority of Asbury Park residents and visitors. Nearly half of our residents exist at or below the poverty level. Only an elite population and mostly seasonal visitors will join the club. How does that serve the CAFRA permit criteria that the club must serve the public? Asbury Park has a history of segregation. The city and many residents are working hard to lessen the divide. The addition of a private pool club on Asbury Park's boardwalk will effectively create further divide between the haves and have-nots. Out of curiosity, I toured iStar's ocean club, the big tower at 1100 Ocean Avenue. The sales manager said the pool club will be free for three years to their condo buyers. I wondered why they can't use the large pool at their own building. I learned that the pool was designed for their hotel guests, and residents were not able to use the pool on crowded summer days. iStar has again not been transparent with us about who will be the primary members of their pool club four blocks away from their ocean club. It will be their own residents. Again, how does that serve the CAFRA permit criteria that the club serve the public? Let's protect what attracts people to Asbury Park, a beautiful waterfront and a heritage of music, art, and culture. This pool club represents bland elitism and does not fit with our culture or environment. It's time to take pause and revisit the waterfront redevelopment plan to preserve environmentally sensitive land and to be culturally and environmentally appropriate. This doesn't mean that development can't happen in the waterfront district, it just means it needs to be more thoughtful. Thank you.
I like it when techies are wicky. My name is Carrie Butch, and my partner over here is Christina Eliopoulos. Christina and I made a film called...
Hold on one second.
Okay, non.
Raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. Raise your right hand.
I'll raise my right hand. Which one is my right hand? There you go.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, I do. Christina and I made a film about our city, and I always say it was a love letter to our city. It was at the time we documented the redevelopment. And as you guys know, redevelopment is a public-private partnership. So I just want to remind the planning board of where they stand, and of maybe come up here and remind them of the folks that are no longer here because they were pushed out. And they are no longer here because in a redevelopment zone, we circled a community, we circled a neighborhood, and we said, "You have to go." And that's in the plan. And I just want to remind you again that this plan is based on a public-private partnership. The residents of Asbury Park, Asbury Parkers, gave up quite a bit for this plan, which included 453 occupied apartments, 200, I'm sorry, 22 single-family homes, 193 rooming house units, 18 business operations. Some of those businesses and some of those family members are people that are here today. Christina's aunt's home was taken on Sewell. Her family's been in the community since 1917. Rita's business was taken and demolished, and there's currently nothing on it. We have paid for this redevelopment with our lives, with our churches, with our businesses, with our community, with our culture. So on your shoulders, I just want you, as you make this decision for this pool club, I want you to take that into account and to have them with you. Christina, you have to leave right now, but is there anything that you want to say real quick during my three minutes? Okay. The demographics of Asbury Park in 2018 were 47% black, 37% white, 30% Hispanic or Latino, and the median household income was $39,324,000. 24% of our population is 18 or younger. Do we need a pool? We absolutely need a pool. Do we need a pool east of Ocean Avenue? We don't need a pool east of Ocean Avenue. When you say this is private property, they can do with it what they want, this is a public-private partnership. Understand this is a public-private partnership. People gave an awful lot for Asbury Park to be successful. So why not come to the table, iStar, with a proposal that honors that? For example, a private beach club that doesn't take away open space, and that's affordable for the majority of people that live in Asbury Park. One that takes into account equity and inclusion rather than exclusion. One that gives jobs to our residents and swim lessons to our kids. Thank you very much.
Ms. Butch, before you leave the microphone, two things. Can we have your address?
Sure, 500 Deal Lake Drive.
And can you spell Christina's last name? You mentioned it.
Eliopoulos, and it's very hard to spell.
Thank you.
It's E-L-I-O-P-O-U-L-I-S. And if I made a mistake, I'll come back to you later.
Thank you very much.
Plenty of Greeks in this audience.
Ma'am, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Arlene Levinson, 1501 Ocean Avenue, North Beach. Thank you. iStar has made it apparent that their sole concern was and is to build a pool club without consideration to many issues important to our community. Their experts have made presentations that have carefully excluded information necessary to allow this board to make informed decisions relative to the desirability and legality of this project. My first concern is whether the CAFRA permit is still viable. How is it possible to use lies a permit issued in 2002, when everyone knows we've had multiple weather events that clearly demonstrate that this area can be severely affected? It has decimated the beaches and surrounding areas. That this permit depends upon information gathered in the mid-1980s is a further demonstration that the basis for this project is obsolete. iStar's engineers stated that drainage of water from the site will go into existing drainage system. Some of this runoff will be directed to Deal Lake. It is common knowledge that Deal Lake is in need of constant review to ensure the balance of the natural environment, but there hasn't been any communication with the Deal Lake Commission. Once again, how is it possible to approve a design that doesn't address this very real concern? The engineer stated the design is based upon a 25- or 100-year event. However, storm surge has not been taken into consideration and is not represented. How can this planning board evaluate the safety of this design without any investigation into this very real potential event? There still seems to be unresolved concerns with the EPA. Apparently, iStar has had a regular dialogue with the EPA. As a result, we don't know what outstanding issues exist, what it will take to resolve them, and how these issues could impact the project. Again, how can this planning board approve a plan that doesn't have set parameters acknowledged by the EPA? The design of the building itself is in conflict with the requirements of the master plan. It is not consistent with requirements to blend in with other structures around it. According to iStar's landscape architects, the green wall won't be green for seven to 10 years. Additionally, they have decided to utilize a type of honeysuckle that is not native to the local environment. They also acknowledge that this will result with bees being attracted to this wall. Why would this be desirable? The design itself is not conducive to allowing our beautiful shoreline to be viewed by residents and visitors walking or riding down Ocean Avenue. My husband takes over from here.
State your name. Do you swear affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth?
I do. My name is Steven Levinson, it's L-E-V-E-N-S-O-N, 1501 Ocean Avenue.
Thank you.
There is no glass on this building, which is also required. The original intent was to allow a building which would blend in with the local environment, not block it out. The next issue relates to the height of the building. Over 20 feet high with an area rising to 32 feet to accommodate the elevator mechanism, this will block the view of the beach and the ocean from the sidewalk, Ocean Avenue, Sixth Avenue, Seventh Avenue, and North Beach condominiums. In no way does this design enhance the natural beauty of our waterfront. iStar's engineers have stated they are not required to provide parking for their members. As everybody knows, this area is already very congested, and parking is practically non-existent in this part of the city during the spring and summer. This must be a concern for the safety and navigation of our streets. We have concerns about the exclusionary atmosphere inherent to this design. The saw planning engineer pointed out that this is supposed to be a public beach club. Instead, we have a proposed private pool club. The public should have the ability to have access to the natural beauty that would be compromised by this proposed structure. Next, there is the issue of operations. iStar has been reluctant to share information about membership, both total and the cost, months of operation and the hours of operation, whether they are planning on getting a liquor license, types of events, noise levels, will they have a PA system constantly playing music or paging members, lighting issues, some were discussed but information was conflicting. iStar has requested waivers, and the ability to make additional changes without needing to go back for additional approval. They have not demonstrated that they can be trusted to do this in the public interest. The iStar team has made many representations that conflict with common sense. They have attempted to obscure the reality that this design just doesn't belong on a small parcel of land, east of Ocean Avenue and west of the boardwalk. The design doesn't do justice to the realities of the environmental concerns for our beach front. This design distinctly conveys the attitude that they don't care about being good neighbors. I believe that all the factors have the potential to result in greater and more severe damage to the area in the event of a major storm. It's also obvious that more current analysis needs to be taken into consideration to encompass the needs of our shore environment when Mother Nature comes roaring ashore. I believe that iStar's request for waivers from the planning board without specific reference and constant overview should be rejected. Nobody would want to see this pool, building, and all of its contents go floating down the street or beach, causing destruction to persons and property. I believe the planning board and city council should reject this proposal for a private exclusionary pool club due to environmental, exclusionary, and aesthetic concerns, and have iStar go back to the drawing board. Please allow this jewel in the midst of our neighborhood to be something we are all proud of, and not be viewed by all who see it as a blight on our city.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record and address.
Ellen Michelson, 1501 Ocean Avenue. I am not a lawyer, engineer, city planner, architect, landscaper, or any other kind of expert that we've heard so much from related to this proposal, but I am a resident of Asbury Park. Over the past 13 years, I have watched the transformation of Asbury from an abandoned city with great promise to an amazing multicultural and inclusive destination. I have witnessed and appreciate the unique vision that iStar had brought to life in their oceanfront projects and investments to date, and this has helped set Asbury apart from any other city on the Jersey Shore. And I also appreciate the delicate need to balance generating revenues while still preserving our eclectic and unique history and vibe. However, I am greatly disturbed on many levels over this pool club proposal. Wesley Grove in North Beach were the first new residential buildings to invest in Asbury Park's future. Even now, other than the senior tower and now the new ocean club, North Beach is the only existing residential building situated on Ocean Avenue with direct views of the ocean. We drove through Asbury 15 years ago, and it was a deserted and depressed city. We came back 13 years ago and happened to pass by North Beach. They were celebrating the grand opening of their patio that day and invited us to join them. Once we saw the view, we were hooked, and bought our unit a month later. Over the years, this patio area has become the vibrant social hub of our community. We've brought our family and friends here to sit with us, share the view, enjoy the tranquility of the ocean, and experience the quieter side of Asbury. In a meeting during the summer of 2018, iStar VP Brian Chariuka met with several members of our North Beach HOA Board and Taylor Management. He assured them and us that the visual footprint from our patio would remain intact, and that just the ground floor lobby would be blocked. That, however, is now proving to be a false assurance. I know there was a pool across the street from our location years ago. However, that pool was across the street from the Monterey Hotel. Their guests were transitory, and were all given access to the pool during the stay. Locating a pool across from a hotel is very different than locating it across from a 160-unit residential building. We still haven't heard any details on months of operation, hours, noise levels, will there be live music, future liquor licenses, maximum number of members, parking requirements or lack thereof, membership costs, et cetera. How could any of us reasonably evaluate the quality of life impact on our residential area without that information? Will daily access be made available, and will pricing be affordable for all the residents of our city? What will be gained and what will be lost if this project goes through as currently planned? iStar has been a cooperative and progressive neighbor until now. Is it really worth selling our collective soul to the highest bidder? Thank you.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Dave Michelson, M-I-C-H-E-L-S-O-N, 1501 Ocean Avenue.
Thank you.
I've listened to all the experts from iStar and saw testifying about the potential environmental impact of the pool club. Most of it was arcane language about measurements of saturation points, pipe flows, 2,500-year storms, I didn't really understand. There are a few things, however, that I do understand. I wonder if any of these experts were at the proposed Ocean Avenue site when Sandy hit. If they were, they would have seen the ground floor doors of our complex totally pushed in by the storm surge, with water splashing up to the second floor lobby. They would have seen bulldozers clearing mounds of sand that were deposited several blocks from the ocean. They would have seen the devastating damage up and down the shoreline, and they would have seen Deal Lake, Sunset Lake, and Wesley all overflow their banks and damaged. This is what people who live in our neighborhood experience firsthand, and have that as the basis for our concerns about this pool club. In fact, last week, since our last meeting, there were two articles, front page in the Newark Star-Ledger. The opening sentence of one said, "New Jersey will become the first state in the nation to require builders to consider the impact of climate change if they want their projects approved," and that was said by Governor Murphy. He also said that a Rutgers University report showed sea levels along New Jersey's coast are expected to rise more than a foot by 2030 and two feet by 2050. There was also part of the second article where it discussed toxic algae in the state of New Jersey, where there are now 39 harmful algae blooms confirmed in 2019. Eight of those are still persisting, Deal Lake is among those. We all know overall weather patterns are only going to get more intense in the foreseeable future, which will intersect with rising sea levels. There will inevitably be future nor'easters, hurricanes, even another Sandy. If there's a strong storm surge that hits the high tide, we know all the theoretical sand saturation points and pipe flows we heard about will be meaningless. sand saturation points and pipe flows we heard about will be meaningless. What guarantee can possibly be made that when such a storm hits, that structural elements from the proposed pool club might not come loose from either the storm or the surge and score a direct hit into our building? How confident can anyone be in the city's northern neighborhoods that we wouldn't be endangered physically, environmentally, or chemically from this misguided proposal? These concerns are too important to ignore as you deliberate. Thank you.
I just want to note an objection for the record. It appears Mr. Lieberman wants to speak as a member of the public. Am I interpreting that correctly?
That seems like he wants to speak as part of the public.
It seems odd to me for an attorney to be a sworn member of the public giving a factual statement.
Well, usually I get a closing statement, and the procedure here is we're not getting one, so I want to do the three minutes.
Would it be possible instead, in the interest of fairness, because I'm not comfortable being sworn as a witness, I don't think that that's ethically the right thing for me to do. I think it would be more appropriate if Mr. Lieberman is going to speak, that we be allowed three minutes at the beginning of the deliberations. He can have his three minutes and I'll have my three minutes, and that way it's not part of public comment, rather it's us being advocates for our client.
Mr. Lieberman?
I think that's appropriate. I mean, you know, attorneys can't be sworn if they're representing a client, so I would agree with Ms. Smith on that, and as long as he has an opportunity to speak, that's an appropriate way of dealing with it.
So then each, so you're proposing that each of you have three minutes prior to deliberation to each of you, that's your closing statement?
To make a closing statement, yes.
Generally, procedurally, the applicant has the final option to make a closing statement before deliberations, so if you give Mr. Lieberman an opportunity to provide a closing statement on behalf of his client, I think that's appropriate, and if it's three minutes, it's three minutes.
Okay, so then first, Mr. Lieberman would have a closing statement, then you would have a closing statement.
Are we going to be bound by the three minutes or five minutes if it's a closing?
Three. Three.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that at the end, that way we have the benefit of...
I gotta keep moving on then.
Right.
Thank you.
So depending on how things work out today, let's just say that depending on how late we go, maybe it'll be today, but most likely it will be the next time we meet.
My preference is to do it the next time if possible.
That's fine. Before deliberations is fine.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, ma'am, your name and address, please.
Maureen Nevin, Deal Lake Court, Asbury Park.
Thank you.
And Asbury Radio. Okay, so the last meeting, the I-STAR attorney made it very clear that we're still working off the, thank you, we're still working off the 2004 CAFER permit, right? And also, she made it clear that this facility, this pool club, would definitely be private, exclusive, members only, okay? Now, I looked up the 2004 CAFER permit, and it gives the requirements and why they decided that a facility would be nice on the beach. However, it says here that the facility is open to the general public and supports beach tourism-related activities, that is retail, amusement, and food services. Lodging facilities are excluded, and the facility complies with all the flood-proofing requirements and flood hazard areas. So my comment is, how can you do this when it's an objection, it's an unpermitted use by the CAFER permit? And also, I'm advised, got more time yet? I'm advised that if we do violate the CAFER permit, it could throw out the entire redevelopment plan, so we want to think about that, I guess, right? Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name.
Felicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey.
Thank you.
My question is, again, and I'm going to take another note. First, with the CAFER report and just new proclamations...
Felicia, this is public comments, not questions. I just want to make that clear.
Okay. Just a statement, this is how I started. So again, first with the CAFER reports and everything being such in limbo. There was a meeting last week held by the freeholder and the state senator about a proposed plant that would affect Tinning Falls, and the community stood up and asked and said they don't want it, and they wanted to know all kinds of information. They had the State Department, the State DEP there to explain the environmental effects and everything there. We haven't had that here, but we've had repeated statements of the community saying they don't want it. We have questions. We have no idea what will happen inside of this facility. We have no idea what kind of impact it'll have to the community. How can we approve something where we don't know exactly what happens? I've heard murmurs through town that said it's just a bunch of wealthy people complaining about their view being obstructed, but in all honesty, it's a community saying that we don't want it, it doesn't fit into our plan, and we want something different. We're not opposed to development, even though I've seen the development literally move out families who's been here generations, stores that've been there for generations, change a waterfront where homes where people lived and turned it into parking lots. I've seen that in my own lifetime, right? In the city that has blighted, but it's also the city that's raised me. So my question to the planning board is, how can we correct mistakes made by generations in the past to make a better future for tomorrow? My question and my statement is, we have to be a cohesive community. We haven't been in the past. We've been a city made of hypocrisies, right, and conflicting lives. We can be one community, but we have to start somewhere, and in this plan, it is not a start. It's actually a finish. So please, I'm speaking to the planning board, there's too many questions. There's too many things up in the air for us to go on with this plan. And for, as a person that sat through all of the testimonies here the whole year, right, and sits through mostly everything that comes, happens in this city, there's too many open and we have an out, and our out is saying and asking I-STAR, right, because we are a partner, to do something that we all want. It's doable, it's just you have to ask for it, and your community is saying, please ask for it, let's do something that's beneficial for everybody. Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Catherine Healy, Eighth Avenue. Getting out to meetings is difficult for me as a new mom, but being here tonight is crucial because expressing my opinion on the future of our city where my baby will grow up is me also being a mom. My whole life is now dedicated to ensuring my son is able to live a healthy life, and part of that is insisting that he inherits a just and livable world. I'm here tonight to implore you against the approval of the private pool club. The proposed pool club is problematic for a myriad of reasons, but I am highly concerned about the project for two main reasons: equity and environmental impact. It is very apparent to all of us in this audience that I-STAR uses the language of beach club because pool club would be too overtly reminiscent of the racist pool clubs of the not-too-distant past. But that's how racism often works today, right? Buried and woven into all our systems so that it's not obviously stated, X, Y, or Z group, keep out, because that would be illegal. Instead, our racism today is found in how our economic system is structured, in who obtains higher-paying jobs, in housing preferences, healthcare, and who bears the brunt of environmental hazards. Sadly, this list goes on in far too many institutional ways. I know the city government and the planning board have already done so much to try and raise the whole community up, and I urge you to continue pushing for development that does not divide the city more than it already is. The spotlight is currently on Asbury. Why not set an example for other cities on how to develop with all residents in mind? My second main issue with the proposed pool club rests in the environmental implications and domino effect of a pool club east of Ocean Avenue. Yes, other towns have pools in similar locations, but in 2020, there is no more ignoring the fact that building anything in a high-velocity zone is short-sighted and already negligent on the part of the developer. Forget about a vat of watery chemicals sitting there. A new climate report from Rutgers scientists came out a few weeks ago that they named New Jersey as Ground Zero for feeling the effects of climate change. Again, we stand at an interesting crossroads as a coastal city. We can go along with business as usual and continue to build along our shoreline, or we can think intelligently about what needs to be done to prepare our town for the next super, excuse me, superstorm and develop as if we are listening to the science. Many flora and fauna have already fallen victim to our destruction across the globe, and humans are not immune to this. We need to plan now. The Trust for Public Land put out a report that green space on coastlines can help mitigate coastal flooding, capture carbon, and foster a sense of community for those that will be affected by extreme weather. There was no mention of pool clubs, though. I've glossed over the pragmatic problems. The plan was made pre-Sandy, the permit calling for two public pools, parking, lack of operational info, lack of cohesive design, but make no mistake, this plan is flawed at the micro and macro level. We are asking to be brought together as a city and know that although our children and grandchildren may not amass great wealth, they can inherit a livable future. Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is William Macklin, Bill Macklin. I live near Asbury Tower.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I'm a new resident. I moved here in February, and I joined this issue in February. I'm not, I'm far from an expert in environmental concerns and engineering, but I have, you know, two doctor's degrees, and I can read, and I've listened, and based on the totality of what I hear and what I've read and what I've seen in the meetings here, I urge you to reject this proposal as it stands. Now, I know it's a difficult decision. You're in the hot seat, but remember, there's a 1,600-member petition floating around here, and based on what I've seen, I'll bet, you know, it's a sure bet that all but a couple of those residents are opposed to this project as it stands, and I believe you have to take that into consideration. Also, I worked in a region in schools and was involved in the desegregation of some local school district here, and I can remember not too long ago, although New Jersey is not my home, that this city had some serious, serious racial issue. Yet you're prepared to support a proposal, a proposal for a pool club. It's not a pool, it's a four-foot-high bathing, four-foot-deep bathing site. You're prepared to propose or approve a proposal that's at its base extremely divisive. I mean, you've made some progress, as I've noted it in my area. That's something I do know a bit about, you know? I've been fired more than once for standing in that issue, but nonetheless, it is extremely important that you make this proposal a, something that everybody in this community can participate in. Now, I say based on the totality of the facts that you have here, it should be rejected as it stands. Now, if you let the argument that I-STAR presents trump the notion, the overall notion that this proposal should be rejected, then I plead with you to insist that the very highest standards of engineering are used, the very highest standards of engineering, and you do something about the appearance of this proposal. It's dreadful. It's a dreadful project that, I mean, my closest support for the SAW group rested on the observation by the planner that it was an insult to the community. It really is, as it stands.
All right, thank you, sir.
Ma'am, do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
My name is Joyce Grant, 1701 Ocean Avenue.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, the onus of this project, this awful project, is on your hands, so I'm here to implore you to not build or allow to be built this environmentally irresponsible project, which will only hurt the environment health of our beaches and the economic reason that we have for our city. I implore you to not build something or approve of something that only represents not even a major part of our population who will not be able to afford to go there, myself included. So I plead with you, along with the pleas of the entire community, and I'm sure the entire community that lives here feels the same way that I do, to not approve this project. Thank you.
Ma'am, do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Mary Ann Volante Castardi, 1701 Ocean Avenue, Asbury Park.
Can you spell your last name for me?
My last name? V-O, oh, well, it used to be V-O-L-A-N-T-E, but now it's C-A-S-T-A-R-D-I.
Okay, just one second. Excuse me, there are some seats over here if anybody is standing that would like to sit down. There are a number of seats available here. Go ahead.
Okay, this is the first time I'm speaking out to the public about anything, but this is my last chapter in my life, and I am really concerned about losing what I have. I grew up in Bradley Beach, New Jersey. I graduated from Asbury Park High School in 1972. I can look out my window and see Asbury Park High School. If I lost, if I lost that, I would be devastated. I would be devastated. My family is walking distance to me. My two children in Ocean Grove are walking distance to me. Yeah, it's nice that they have all this beautiful stuff going up, but who can really afford it, you know? We've got people who are really struggling to keep their lives going, and I'm just praying that my last chapter in my life, you know, stays here and I'm not sent away from where my home is. This is my home.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony?
Can I ask a question before I start? I want to know why I gotta be under oath, because if I get up here and say something and I tell a lie, then what's gonna happen? I'm gonna get in trouble?
Excuse me, sir, these are the rules that we're abiding by. If you'd like to take the oath, that's okay.
No, that's why I asked, that's all.
That's, those are the rules. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna take the oath, because I was told, I was always told to tell the truth and shame the devil. My name, yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Your name?
My name is Dwayne Small. I'm a former Charter Study Commission member. The purpose of us having to change of government or Charter Study because the town was divided, and we wanted to bring the town together. Now, Asbury Partners used to have this down here, then I guess y'all gave them some money and y'all took over? Y'all said that everything that y'all doing is binding. This beach club, I read it in, I read some article where Brian Chirripka was saying the waterfront redevelopment agreement is binding, and they just gonna come and speak, and the procedure gonna be this and be that. But what about the workforce development part of that waterfront redevelopment agreement? That's also binding. A meeting was set up between me and Brian... A meeting was set up between me and Brian by this lady, Michelle Glad. Brian pulled out the meeting. I wonder why? I, I helped drive them 1,281 pounds, 1,281 piles in the ground at the Esperanza when y'all came in and changed the name. You know how many people from this community was working down there? You know how crime went down in the city? But when I Star came, what happened? How many people you seen working down there? John, they the developer that started this, disobeying that workforce component of that redevelopment agreement. Now we got somebody over here on the west side doing it. Go look over there, nobody from this community working. You got these young men between the age of 18 and 30 something with an unemployment rate of damn near 60%. But go look at the young men who working on that site. They pick them up in Freehold on the corner in the morning. Go look down there who work for I Star. If they was really about this community and they was a good neighbor, they see all of the people standing up against this beach club, but they still want it because they want the money. That's all they concerned about is the money. They got their high-power lawyers up in here with their suits. Don't, none of y'all live here. They don't live here, John. They don't walk these streets. But they want to come and put a beach club here and divide this community even more. You know the history down there. A person like me couldn't go down there unless I was working. But once I got finished working, I had to leave. So what, we gonna do that again? Power concedes nothing without a demand. It never has and it never will. So if y'all gonna go ahead and vote for them and let them get your beach club, then y'all the ones who gotta, y'all gotta deal with us as the people here. But y'all also gotta deal with us, because guess what? We'll stand in front of every one of y'all buildings. Anytime y'all have an event with big signs, especially that hotel, y'all ain't let me work on it. Y'all ain't let my people work on it. I Star, y'all got to go. She write about that, 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 that chef program y'all got. They write about that chef program they got for here, but what about the other part of it? It's more people working on y'all projects that don't speak English than do speak English. And that's a shame. John, can y'all get a workforce development report from them?
Excuse me, your three minutes, your three minutes are up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Ralph Mitchley, 1501 Ocean. That's a hard act to follow, but I'll try. 2007, driving through Asbury, I saw the North Beach development and decided ultimately that this would be the home that I would ultimately retire in. I've been here since 2007. There were still drug deals going on on Ocean Avenue. But a lot of us spearheaded this regeneration and the success of this town. And now, we're getting stabbed in the back by this application. Why? In 2007, I went to the zoning board, as anybody who buys in any property should go and check what the zoning is in their neighborhood. Were they planning on buying? And I was told, yes, they could build a structure across the street, but it would be limited to height of two stories, two stories. This, I'm a developer builder. I've been in their seats. I have never had a city ever say that the height requirements can be determined by the boardwalk, the rear of the property, and not the front of the property. Why? They're picking up five, six feet of height. They're making their application more acceptable to them, not to us. I had the right, everybody in this room has the right to implore each of you on the planning board, you're our last line of defense, to insist that these zoning laws be enforced and that these, this structure, whatever we're calling this fortress, because that's all it is, it's four walls, it's a fortress. That's the message you're sending out here. That that structure meet and comply with all zoning laws. It does not. When I asked the planner about what the occupancy limit was, none. It's already been stated here a number of times, all of the objections, the parking, the noise. I, I, I heard him say that they don't even comply with the 10:00 PM curfew law. Doesn't apply to them. They have more money than the rest of us, so it doesn't apply to them. Ultimately, you have to put your foot down. I'm reminded by the picture behind you of the Monterey Hotel. I was told when I bought it to North Beach that the reason why it was Spanish architecture is because the city wanted the building to be similar to that structure that was previously on the site. Go look at the structure that was there on the Seventh Avenue swimming pool and how beautiful that structure was. Yes, it was many decades ago, but they could rebuild this in a much more acceptable fashion. I'm not saying don't build something. I'm saying build something that's inclusive, acceptable, and meets all the requirements. And you people, if you don't want to appear to it, think about somebody buying a property across the street from you. And they come along and say, well, the variances don't apply to me. I'm gonna put up a structure that's five, 10 feet stronger, taller than anybody else in the neighborhood. We are asking you to hold the line because you are our neighbors. We implore you, just as much as if you were out here in the audience, that you uphold the laws and put your foot down. Get them to redesign it so it's similar to the Seventh Avenue pool that was there before, just like the Monterey and the North Beach was forced to do.
Thank you, sir.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Uh, yes, I do. Warner Baumgartner, a city historian. That's a great segue from a previous speaker. In 2002, I had the privilege of participating in the creation of the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan. You've already heard numerous testimony about architectural issues, the blank walls, the parking, the lack of pedestrian interaction. I'm not going to repeat all of that. You're well aware of that. What I would like to do is give you a little background into the philosophical aspects of the redevelopment plan. In 2002, the plan was crafted by developers. It was woefully deficient in any kind of real architectural or historical founding. That's where the city came in, hired a professional urban planner, Andres Duani, and an architectural team to create guidelines which were extremely stringent. The idea was to create an environment where new construction would be cohesive and reflect the heritage of Asbury Park with the ability to introduce new modern elements where they were appropriate. As the prior speaker mentioned, the Monterey residential complex is because the Monterey Hotel was there. You can see the similarity. The swimming pool was a concept created because there was traditionally a swimming pool there, as far back as the early 1900s. There was a public pool there. The idea was to replicate that use. They called it a private pool, I believe, because it was privately owned at this point. Could still be publicly accessible, was the intent. There were several things that you could do to improve this entire situation. Strive for architectural excellence. Strive for a building that fits in the context of what was envisioned in that neighborhood. The other issue that's been discussed is parking. You know, in 2002, the concept was that nobody would come to Asbury Park for, for beach activities from outside the community. It was envisioned to be a playground or a city within the city. That's why there's no parking or lack of adequate parking, to be more correctly stated. That is a deficiency that needs to be corrected also. As far as the process, the TRC was supposed to be the fundamental gatekeeper of assuring that an application met the architectural and design standards. That process has, has not been used properly either. So there are several failures in this entire episode here. I hope you correct them. The developer has a right to develop this property by law, but there are standards and this planning board is obligated to enforce standards for the betterment of the community. Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name for the record.
My name is Reverend Allison Estes. I live at 910 Fifth Avenue. I was a pastor in this city, First United Methodist Church, during the 2002 redevelopment stuff that Werner was just talking about. And I've been a resident of Asbury Park for 24 years. The, my bishop tried to send me to another town and I said, heck no, I won't go. This is my city. And I chose to raise my three children here. Clara is my youngest. My oldest, Mylea, is a senior at Asbury Park High School, and she was supposed to come and speak tonight, but she wasn't feeling so well. So I dragged little sister with me, but told her she didn't have to say anything. We're raising activists in our family. You haven't met me much, but I've been raising, raising children to be the voice. So there's a lot of healing that needs to be done in Asbury Park, and we all should be aware of that. 24 years ago, there's a few people in this room who were here then, and there's a lot of new people. And thanks be to God for the gifts and presence and skills that new people have brought here. However, gentrification has been very, very difficult, very, very hard on our community and on our residents. And there's, you know, there's no pretty way to look at it. It has been very difficult. I want to speak tonight, I was, been thinking about this, and I was thinking about several years ago in Ocean Grove when people wanted to get married on the boardwalk. And they were told that, no, they couldn't be married there because the owners of the boardwalk, the Camp Meeting Association, would not permit same-sex marriage to take place. And we all got really upset because the boardwalk, even though it's privately owned, is supposed to be for public use. And do you remember how upset we all got? And we said, Asbury Park will not be like that. We are a place that will welcome all people. Our beach is for all people. And I took my oldest to the beach when it was a rickety, rumbly boardwalk and it cost $20 for a season pass. This place is for all of us. And, and as divided as we are in so many ways, east versus west, black versus white, income, gay, straight, all the different ways that we are divided, the one place in this town that brings this all together is the beach. And on the beach, I love, well, I don't like Fourth of July anymore, it's too crowded, but I would love that I would see people from all sides of Asbury Park gather on the boardwalk and on the beach to play and make merry and make a sense of community. There is a lot of work that needs to be done yet in Asbury Park, and this pool club is not going to bring people together. It will further divide this city that needs to be healed. I ask you to not consider, giving an okay to this, I ask you that you would not give it your approval. Thank you.
My name is Linda Brophy. I'm from 407 Sixth Avenue.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely. So I just want to start off with one statement that's simple, and I've worked in corporate America a long time to really know this. If it's not inclusive, it's discriminating, somebody, somewhere, somehow. And I just want to follow up with a kind of sweet story. I have my daughter, 17 now, and one of the things we really loved about down here and still love about it, it's inclusive. Everyone feels at home when they come here. And I'm sure you know the publicity that we've gotten. It far reaches, you know, not New Jersey, not beyond New York even, in other states. And I love the comment or the statement by the mother with the, the young child. Let's set an example. Let's take that and, you know, really, it's where our, our country is going. Let's keep it unified rather than divided. And then just with the story, my nephew and my sister-in-law came down to Asbury, I want to say, two summers ago, and spent some time down here. And that September, my young nephew came out of the closet and openly announced that he was gay. And I really think he, he still loves to come down here, always, you know, that's the first thing he asks for Asbury. And I want to say that this helped him feel comfortable that, you know, he wasn't alone and you're included, you're, you're part of everybody, nobody, you know, singles you out. I'd like to say that that had a big hand in helping his strength and bravery in coming out. And he's such a happy boy, you know, now that he's out. I would love that to, to be the way Asbury stays. And again, all I can say is that if it's not inclusive, it's discriminating someone somehow.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name.
Catherine Murphy, 510 Deal Lake Drive.
Thank you.
Good evening. And I'd like to thank everyone here, all of the community, the planning board, I Star, our professionals, for this long process that we've, that we've been through. Really, I'd like to speak to my personal experience with environmental impacts. I'm a humanitarian. I do a lot of disaster relief work. I ran a Sandy Relief Initiative for three years, rebuilt 71 homes, seven small businesses, 11 surf shops, and seven volunteer fire departments. I saw what these storms can do. And watching all of this and knowing what we have done as a community to try to bring information to you all, I'm asking that you please do not approve this, this permit. There, I do understand that by law, they have the right to build there, but what is being proposed to build, to be built there is just irresponsible development. You know, Deal Lake, Convention Hall, all of these storms that we get, the nor'easters, the sand, you know, I just have seen firsthand. I'm working on a project in Puerto Rico right now for rebuilds from Hurricane Maria, where things were just ripped completely off of the front of the, you know, off the face of the earth in the same proximity to the ocean. And why, you know, why, while I understand that there is a right to be able to develop there, what I cannot fathom is how you would want to build something on flood maps from 1983, knowing what we know now. You know, we're a community, we're a very diverse community. Those of us who are part of safe Asbury's waterfront have spent thousands and thousands and thousands of hours and tried to get the best professionals to provide our best information to present to you a picture of what could happen if this proposed pool club is built. It doesn't fit with the community, it doesn't include the community, it doesn't respect the neighborhood where we live, and I am asking you, beseeching you to please think this is not a good idea and to not approve this proposal. Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. My name is Teresa Jones, 20 Hill Drive in Neptune. I'm a former business owner and employer of the city of Asbury Park. My family owned businesses here and myself for more than 50 years. We've been hearing these comments, you've got all the facts, the environmental concerns, the demographics, the facade and landscaping. These are not alternative facts. These are facts and concerns that the community has. And one thing I want to implore you, throw the plan out. Because we are now at a point...
Please, please, we need to be able to hear.
We are now at a point in time where we're going backwards. The city of Asbury Park is more segregated than it was 20, 30, 40, and 50 years ago. The city of Asbury Park is more segregated than it was 20, 30, 40, and 50 years ago. And I'm telling you that as an older adult, I look, I'm a little older than what I appear to be, but I've been around a minute. It is more segregated now than it was 40 years ago. On a summer day, it's extremely segregated. You may see people of color, but they're walking along the little benches of the boardwalk. They're not entertaining in the restaurants, the shows, the cultural music is not my people's music. The city of Asbury Park is 75% people of color. The mix in this room does not represent the majority. However, we all have a common understanding. The folks here are not accepting of it. The community does not feel as though they're included anyway.
So that's why we're not here.
So, we need to not go back to 1950. And those of you that are just coming here, you may not know, the city of Asbury Park was a rally location for the KKK. I am a woman of a certain income. I don't entertain myself down there on the boardwalk because there's nothing there that I really want. I don't feel included. When you go through, people are watching you like you're gonna steal something or take something. This whole idea needs to be thrown. The pool that was there prior was extremely segregated. The only time my people could go in there would be to do the cleaning. We're already at that point. The other businesses and other things that have been put out there, and I'm gonna call I-STAR, Madison Market, y'all have not been inclusive with my people. We don't want to go back to 1950. We don't want to go back to 1960. We don't want to go back to 1970. 1980 was segregated. When the new businesses came onto Cookman Avenue, they didn't want to include my family businesses in their business incubator. We're tired of this nonsense. Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name for the record.
Beth Stuckey, Deal Lake Drive.
Thank you.
Obviously, nobody wants to keep hearing the same thing over and over again, although there's a reason that it's being said, and that's because we want to make sure we're being heard, and we keep hearing that in all kinds of venues these days, the same testimony over and over again, so we know that there's a passion for this. The reason I wanted to talk is because I'm fairly new here, I'm not brand-new anymore, but I'm fairly new. And I'm not, I try not to sound naive, this is a business venture, you have a job to do, that they do have a right, I-STAR has a right to develop that property. And you've heard all kinds of reasons why it shouldn't be the property it is. What I want to talk about is how I choose to live and how I think that a lot of people here are trying to live and would like you to rule, and that is with integrity. And I try to live with intentionality. So when I think about the things that I want to do and how I want to spend my day and where I want to put my time, including being here tonight, when there were certainly other things I had and I'm sure other people had to do, it's with intentionality because this is important. And it's important for every reason you've heard, including the woman right before me and the women and people before her. The integrity comes in with the fact that it seems to me, I'm not an attorney, but it seems to me that you have more than enough evidence and support as a planning board to not approve this. And that's what I'm hoping you will realize, is that you don't, that even if you feel somehow like you need to, because I don't know what the politics of this is, I don't really know how this all comes into play, that's not my strong suit, but it seems to me there's been so much testimony that you can stand on and you can reject this, and we can compromise, and there can be, I-STAR has not shown, I'm sorry, I-STAR, but as much as they need to make money, and they're entitled to, and they brought money to this town, and it preceded my coming here, there's a way to do it with integrity that brings everybody together and doesn't divide everybody, and they can still make money, and the town can still prosper from it, everybody in the town can prosper from it. And I don't see why that should be so difficult, and I think the lack of integrity is showing in the design from the get-go, and the lack of desire to even overcome things that they don't, they're not required to. I don't see that here, and I don't understand why we would even be discussing Asbury Park wanting to put something in that doesn't reflect our integrity as a city. Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. And last time you got me, 'cause I put up my wrong hand, but I got you. Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue. I have three parts to my comments. One, I can talk about the issues that we've already brought to this board, and we can talk about the wastewater structure that they're building this plan on. And after hearing the gentleman talk about Sandy, we know that they're evidence to their wastewater system that it could clear out, but we saw that it went two stories in north, the north beach. But we can also talk about the bees from the honeysuckle, we can talk about impervious surfaces, we can talk about all these other things that went into this structure and environmental and the racial background of this. But we need to examine this. We have to understand the history of I-STAR. I-STAR came to this project in 2010. They asked this city, when they filed their CAFRA report, to come to the table and negotiate. Right now, their CAFRA report was only five years old. By 2010, they had not met their expectation. And we had to come to an agreement. They gave up money, the city gave up money for its school system to help I-STAR continue its development. These are facts. Right now, our school system is almost going to be depleted of $25 million because these properties on the beach that I-STAR owns doesn't pay taxes to them. So we have to really look at what we're talking about and understand that these issues are there, and they have committed a lot of injustices that we have to confront. Now, my third part is, I'm gonna put myself into your shoes, and if I had to sit up there and we talk about what you can make a decision on, you could deny for all the reasons that were presented. You can also ask the city council to go back and say, "This CAFRA report was only five years. I was a CAFRA reporter, exposed this then to 30 years." We can also look at the ethical backgrounds. When you make a decision, you're making a decision not only as a board member, but as a community, as a human being, and a resident of this family that we've all come here to support of saying, "We don't want this." So when we look at this, we have to decide on principles and character, facts and figures, which gives you enough to establish to make that decision. We need you to look ahead. If you want to look at the CAFRA report, it's available online at the asbury.com, and you can pull it up yourselves. Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
What's your, state your name for the record and your address.
My name is Rosalie McMear, alias Isis Robb. I live at 1603 Qualies Avenue. I came today for several different reasons. Number one, Ms. T over there, I knew when her father and her mother was fighting for the rights for their bar. I work with the children in this community. I teach them drumming all over to all schools practically for nothing, because there's no money in the schools to even pay nobody. So the only one thing that they have free, that they could just go and walk up and down the boardwalk, they're being charged to even go on the beach. That's number one. Number two, my, our children, and I'm saying my black children, do not have a chance here. Young men like this man over here that just spoke about having a job, I don't see too many black men working in this town doing nothing, not even sweeping the ground. So for his housing, when they do build a house, majority of the time, most of the white people live in there, and very few black people live in there. So this, I'm telling you the truth, because I see the truth, and I see it when it's happening, before it happened, and whilst it's happening, and when it's finished, said and done, we're the last at the table. And if there's a crumb or two left on the table, sometime the tablecloth is shaken and the crumbs fall to the floor to give us a chance, because a lot of us are good, and we try to, Ms. T is a nurse, she had to quit her job because of all of the ridicule, all of the downtrotting things that are going on. So give us a chance. You don't know what you're losing until you lose it, and once you lose it, then you say, "Uh-oh, well, okay, that's gone." I've seen where housing was built for people to move in, black people wind up living there because white people did, came there for a while and left it. So we get the leftovers, and they're not satisfied with that because they come back and they take it. My son went on the beach, he has problems, but they asked him to leave the beach, and he was not welcome to come back. I see that the children in this community, they don't go to the beach. Number one, they have to pay a high price. Number two, they can't afford it. So so far, it's going to the pool, that's never gonna happen. So please, think, we all live in this town together, let's live in this town together as one, because separated, it's not gonna happen. So when the storm come and the hurricanes come and the houses get to falling down, you're gonna want somebody to help build it back up. And we can do it together, but it's hard to do it separate. I'll share.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record and your address.
My name is Rita Marano, M-A-R-A-N-O, 504 Eighth Avenue, Asbury Park. I've been coming to these meetings for I don't know how many years, and I always wondered what those three did up there. I never saw their reports. One is an engineer, one is a planner, and the other one's the attorney. I think we're getting short-changed when we don't see their reports that we're paying their salaries. Why is it that we don't see what they write about the beachfront and about the pool? We have never seen a report from the engineer or the planner, and the attorney just keeps the law in order, I guess. But I was wondering, we don't get the full story about what they think, and they're supposed to be working for us, I think, the planner and the engineer, and we don't get any reports. Aren't we supposed to see their report and what they're thinking? They do work for Asbury Park, right? I think it's very unfair that we have people working for us, and then we don't know what they're doing. We don't ever see their reports, and I think we should. I'd like to know what that engineer and that planner is thinking about the pool. They haven't made a comment, they sit there, sometimes they have something in front of them, sometimes they don't. We have a right to see their report and see what they're thinking about and what they're doing for us. I mean, like, it's just unbelievable that we don't see anything that the engineer or the planner does. It's not enough that the planning board sees it. This is the public, you see all the people here, and how many of them are upset? I haven't heard one good thing about the pool. And Mr. Rodriguez that was here the last meeting, he told you what he thought about the pool, and he didn't think that you should even hear this. He thought the zoning board should hear it. And he doesn't know how it got before the planning board, and neither do we. So maybe there's something going on that we don't know about. We would like to see the engineer's report and the planner's report. I think it's important that we know what they're thinking, too. I see their bills every week, and one of them is two and a half pages of bills. And I think that there's a misunderstanding here. We don't know the full story, and it's gotta be told.
Right.
And I'm just saying, I hope you're gonna think about all of this, and how about issuing the report so we can read it? Want to know what they're thinking. Are they for the pool? Are they against the pool? What are they for? Are they for the people that's paying them their salary? I don't know. But I think those are questions that have to be answered before you even make a decision. And I really, I'm thankful that you're here and that you give all your time and your volunteers, I understand all that. But this is a very serious time for Asbury Park. And that's it.
If you don't mind, just can, anyone just give me some idea of how many more people are gonna come up, just so that we can gauge it, whether we take a break or not? Is there, is this gentleman the last one?
No, you're not, Ernest.
So you have one? Anybody else that's gonna come up, just so that we have some idea? Nobody else? Okay, so we have about two, two more people coming up. Okay, go forward. Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings, is this the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Dave Ziegler.
Thank you.
Do you need to know where I live? Asbury Park, 1323 Fourth Avenue.
Thank you.
So guys, listen, you know, you guys have done a lot of good stuff for this town. You're not horrible people, you rebuilt some good stuff. But one of the things that I've, you know, I've had a couple of different careers, and I've done what you did. You know, I owned a $6 million restaurant that I rebuilt, and I put in the middle of Bayville, right? So I built a Starbucks in Peru, and that's what you guys are doing. It's not, it's, it just doesn't fit into this town's architecture. So one of my latest careers is more of a trauma researcher, and one of the things I realize is, on an individual level, I realize that we're destined to repeat the trauma from our childhood, right? And that's true on an individual level, and you keep repeating that trauma later in life, and you meet people within your life that help you bring up that trauma, and it's a chance to deal with the trauma, or you can run away from it. Running away from it is suffering. Dealing with the trauma, removing the splinter when it was put in, you know, is facing the pain and moving towards the pain and resolving it and healing. So, but that trauma can be reproduced on an individual level, as a family, as a city, as a state, and as a country, until you learn the lesson that there is to be learned. And it wasn't too long ago that this town lost a boardwalk. And if you lose this boardwalk, and I guarantee you, there's gonna be riots with the beach club goes in. If you lose this boardwalk, there goes your investment. You guys are here to make money, and you can still make money by doing the right thing and bringing the town together, okay, instead of forcing something. So I was sitting on the beach with a friend of mine, an acquaintance that I've known for a couple of years, he owns a business in Asbury Park, and we're sitting on the dog beach, and I go, "These guys must be spending so much money on the lawyers," because I've done what you did. I had to sit in front of a planning board for months trying to rebuild my restaurant. And he goes, "Yeah, you guys wouldn't just let them do what they're gonna do." And I was like, "Well, I'm just observing." Okay, so what I see is a flood coming, and these people, you can say they're Noah, right? Noah walked with God, and what is God? God is nothing more than a collective consciousness of people that are coming together with a collective goal. When Noah walked with God, he knew, he saw this happening, he saw the flood that was happening, and he started preparing his people. So we have a flood that's coming, and if this beach club goes in, it's gonna be the straw that broke the camel's back, and it's scary. Asbury Park is, it's such a division right now, it's unbelievable. And so he refers to me, he goes, "They, black people don't care about the beach." And I said, "Well, that's not true, they don't feel comfortable at the beach." I said, "Do you feel comfortable on the west side?" "No, I don't." That's what he said. And I said, "Well, I do, right? Because I'm friends with people on the west side." So I said, "They don't feel comfortable there because it's segregated. They're looked at as, you know, people that shouldn't be at the beach club, it's not okay." One of our friends raised a ton of money for beach passes, and I guarantee you, if your beach club became, remains public, we'll raise beach passes and do GoFundMe projects to get people of color into your private beach club. So this town does come together when it's needed, and this is an investment that I think you're gonna lose your tail on if you're not smart and pull out. you're going to lose your tail on if you're not smart and pull out. What I'm curious is, what are you going to do with the casino and the carousel? You know, are you distracting us with this beach club so you can tear that thing down? So where are you taking this? Where are you leading this? You're good people, we're not here to kill you, we want to accept you. Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and your address for the record.
Ernest Migoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey, also known as the Santander Building.
Thank you.
My unit's on the East Side, and everything that's going on is directly in my view. I came here in August of 2007, I had a panoramic view, my unit faces west, south, east, and a little bit north, and I thought, "This is my final working place." And so far now, three areas are gone with development, I can't see anything. And now we're here about the last little piece, which is me facing east, I look right down Deal Lake Drive, I look on the side of and at North Beach from the fifth floor. And now we have projects, a pool, and we have, I think, what's the COE thing called there, where you may build townhomes? And then, of course, my favorite fishing beach is gone, and of course, my boardwalk was taken out, one of the reasons I moved here, on a weekend, I think, and then everybody said, "We're sorry," and then you said you put it back, and then I find out, well, you put it back all right, but you created a bond to put it back. I think of $6 million that we have to pay. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's pretty offensive. And I think that I-STAR has become the most sophisticated, what do you call it, sleight of hand? In other words, bait and switch? You offer this, right? Let us fix the, what's it called, the Salvation Army building, it'll be for everyone. And of course, it opens up, and it's really nice, and next thing you know, the pool is there, and everyone can go to the pool, the public. And all of a sudden, on one day, something happened, and they made a policy, no more people from the community, no more, especially, it was between two minority parents, one with kids who lived here, not a guest, and one, a guest with kids at the pool, and apparently there was a little misunderstanding, and the result was, no more residents from Asbury, it's now for the people in the pool. Now, I liked it because I could go there and work, and I could sit and have a double tomato juice, and really enjoy myself out at the pool. But I had to go, too, and I thought, "How could you do this?" You know, I come here, I spend $60 on breakfast, I mean, you must like me a little bit, all right? But no, you got to go, too. So I'm out. So now, I think, "Well, that's okay, the Ocean Club is coming, I can go there, right?" No, I can't go there either. So now you want to have the people in the Ocean Club come out in little electric cars and go to a beach club, pool, that they were promised, when in fact, the most expert person in this meeting ever was this man, Carlos Rodriguez. He sat here with an engineer, and they really made everything you're trying to do, whether it's the lawyers, the engineers, the planners, the board, everybody, look like you're all wrong. If you do this, you are so out of compliance, out of law, out of everything. Well, you know what we learned from Asbury? You do it anyway. You do it anyway.
Is there anybody else? Anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, motion to close, comment? Yes, okay. You just got in, just to the last second. Go ahead, go ahead.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Cindy Marcellus, 902 New Street. So my husband and I bought on the dodgy side of town, that apparently nobody else wants to live in, but we love it. My grandparents are from Asbury, and my entire extended family have lived here since the 1910s, and most of them moved out around the '70s, the '80s, the '90s because of the problems going on in this town. And then I happened to do an internship in Longbridge, and I said to my father, "I'm going to buy in Asbury." And my father said, "You don't want to do that. You don't want to go to that town. It's a town where people don't treat each other properly, there's so much problems between minorities and whites, you don't want to live there, that's not the kind of place you want to go." And I ended up buying here anyway. And we have a Guatemalan daughter, and we love the fact that on the West End, my daughter fits in with everybody, and we are the minority. Now, we have seen, even in the short time since we've bought our home here, the difference going on in the East Side. We love the boardwalk, we spend all of our time here, all of our money here, and if you continue to build this up, so that there's such disparity between the have and have not, you are going to put this town exactly back the way it was when my relatives left. Please consider what you're doing, and also, consider the environmental impact you are doing. For those of us who were here during Sandy, it was devastating. It was absolutely devastating, and we don't want to let that happen again. And I can say, my property values have gone up because of the development plan, but the money doesn't make up for the fact that we need a town that is inclusive for all, and we have been trying to get our relatives to come here because it is a town that we feel everyone fits in, not just whites and not just rich people. Please consider that.
Any other comments? Last call.
I know, I had to go twice.
No, sir.
You had to go twice?
No, sir. That was announced at the very beginning of the meeting. A motion to close, public comment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for coming, for expressing your views and your feelings. It's nice to see people come to these meetings that often they're empty. So thank you for having an interest in what's being built here. I thank you for that. So now, just to give you some idea of where we have to go from here, is that I am going to be asking, because there's so much to deliberate, so many presentations that were given, I am asking the planning board to, as you know, we've been taking notes all along throughout all the different presentations, I'm asking the planning board to review all their notes, think about what's been said, think about what's been presented, and to let me know if there are any witnesses that they would like to bring back because there are further questions that they would like to ask. For clarification, so I am asking the planning board to get that information to me by March 9th, so that I can, so that we can submit our request to the attorneys to make sure that the witnesses are available to be there at the date that we're going to deliberate. So that's the plan, okay?
Can I be given a copy of that contemporaneously, so I know what to prepare for?
Oh, to the who? The who? Oh, absolutely. No, you will know who we're looking to bring back, absolutely. So the goal is just to make sure that there's enough time for you, for your witnesses to be able to come, and that we're not telling you the last second, that we need you, okay? So yes, you will get, both attorneys will get whoever we want to come back, okay? Okay, so the next thing is that, at this point, we need to get a motion to carry this application to February 24th without notice, and the only reason for the carrying to February 24th, let me be clear, is that for us to know when the next meeting will be. Right now, I cannot tell you when the next meeting will be for this application. By February 24th, we will know. We will know that during that meeting, one of the agenda items during that meeting will be, and the only thing that will be said is that we're going to make a motion to carry this to whatever the date is, and you will all know, it'll be brought to the papers so that everybody will know. And I know that you have a strong communication channel, because I've seen many of them, so I'm sure that you'll advertise it also once we know what date that is. So that's just a formality, so that you know what we're going to be doing.
So motion to carry to February 24th without further notice.
Without further notice, correct.
I have one question.
Just a second.
Sorry, just one question.
This is, just for the record, Jennifer Smith from Gibbons. Would it be possible for the board members to identify by February 24th what witnesses they may want? That way, we can double-check with the witnesses that they're available when setting the date.
Do you think that that's something that we could do? I'm just asking, okay? If you guys think that you can have it by the 24th, that we have a list of which witnesses we would like to call back?
We will.
You have our commitment that by the 24th, you will know who we would like to see again.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't pick a date and then the witnesses weren't available.
No, that's okay, the 24th, we can do it by the 24th.
Thank you very much.
Your request.
I have a motion by Taylor, second by Manzella. All in favor?
Aye.
Application carries to February 24th, 2020.
Okay, great. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.